Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, January 26, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting but order the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Wright?
Your case.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah. I'd like to lead off tonight with a status report on the pending weather condition. And Beck, can you give that to us, please?
Hey, Ma.
Hey, how you doing?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening. The last winter weather advisory that we got was at 5:30. And the National Weather Service for Portsmouth was issued from 1:00 AM through 12:00 noon Tuesday, with one inch or less of snow accumulation possible. And I said, "possible." We are expected to receive some impact from the southern edge of the winter storm moving east. Rain is expected around 9:00 PM tonight. And if you just came in, you might have seen a little bit of sprinkles, but they're not counting that rain. But they said right around 9:00 PM. And it's supposed to change over to all snow in the early morning hours around 1:00 AM. Should end around 6:00 AM, where the snow accumulation is expected to be one inch or less. Temperature is going to be, in the early morning hours, around 34 degrees, and a high tomorrow around 38 midday and 41 by the afternoon. The winds, however, are expected to be 14 to 16 miles per hour for the next two days. That's the latest.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And Yusef is going to give us a report on what his crews will start doing, starting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Evening, sir.
And the City Council. We have, starting at 12 o'clock, we have our crews coming in at 12 o'clock midnight tonight. And we'll, we have all the sand and salt trucks ready. Everything is ready. We'll see how it goes. We're going to be assessing the conditions at 5:00 in the morning with the police and fire and the manager, and then we'll go from there.
What criteria do you use before you release the trucks that go out and put salt and sand and all that stuff down? Because we're not supposed to have that much here with the temperature and all the roads should not be that big of a problem, but you always want to err the side of caution. But what is the criteria you use?
The criteria is 34 degrees. Whenever it's 34 degrees out, usually the bridges are a couple of degrees below that. That's when the bridges start.
Freezing out.
Freezing out.
So you do just bridges then, or the main roads as well?
Before, if it is icy conditions, we do the bridges only. If it's below that, then we start going other places.
The main roads, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And as Yusef said, we'll have a conference call tomorrow morning around 5:00 to assess the condition. Yusef, Beck, and Rob Butler, and me. So we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to call on Dennis. We had, we've got 1,100 vehicles, and we don't make a report on every one that ends up in a accident, but we had a very unique accident today. And I'd like to give you just a report because it kind of falls into the man-bike-stall category.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We did have the potential for a very serious situation today. We had a loaded garbage truck traveling eastbound on the western freeway. And when it got to the point where you make a left and go into the tunnel, or make a right and go into downtown Portsmouth, the truck veered off to the right and, to avoid hitting the Jersey Wall, compensated back to the left and flipped the truck upside down, or on its side, actually. And it ended up facing, the nose of the truck was facing west, and the rear of the truck was facing east. So you can imagine how much impact it was. We were very fortunate that the driver only got cuts and scrapes and bruises. The paramedics took her directly to Norfolk General Hospital. She was there mostly afternoon. The accident happened just before noon. They found another cut, scrape that they did not detect early on, so they kept her a little longer than they expected. She's doing fine, a little shaken up, as you can imagine. The truck is, and I want to tell you that it's totaled at this point because we don't have that official information back, but my experience would say definitely that the truck is totaled. No one else was hurt. First question, I think the mayor has some pictures here he's made pass around. I have some as well. But it was certainly a serious situation, and I've never seen anything like it before. But the fact that the truck was loaded had something to do with it. The truck veered to the right and then tried to overcompensate to the left, and that's what caused it to flip over. Police Department are doing an investigation, and I don't want to talk a whole lot more about it until that investigation is complete, but we'll get a report back from them. It's exactly what happened. Also, ERC was there, and they're doing their own investigation as well.
Any damage to the Jersey Wall or any of that?
Because... The truck never hit the Jersey Wall.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Any other vehicles involved?
No.
What hospital is?
Norfolk General.
Norfolk General.
Yeah. So we're going through the protocol that we normally do with accidents, but because of the size of this vehicle, where it took place, and typically, we don't have a trash truck flip over. Has one ever flipped over in your...
Not to my knowledge, no.
Yeah.
What time did it happen?
Lunchtime.
Lunchtime?
Just forename.
Okay. Tonight, we have actually three, a three-in-one agenda. We have three items that all relate to finance. Budget discussion, as we told you at the last meeting, from that meeting until the time that I introduced my budget, we'll be giving you information about the budget and how that's developing. One thing, this is a, this right here is from last week's presentation, and what I wanted to underline was that we have not yet filled in the question marks. That's still a work in progress. So when we get into the forecast portion of Carol's presentation, please don't assume that we have these question marks filled in. Also, tonight, we'll give you the status of our, end of our second quarter. We finished the first quarter and the second quarter, so we're 50% through. And then third, we'll give a forecast of what the next five years look in the way of revenues and expenditures, and the gap between the two.
Are we that good to go on five years?
Well, we try to be as good as we can on those predictions. And making those predictions, you have to assume a lot of things about what's going to happen with the national economy and what's going to happen with the state economy. And we try to go to every event. In fact, Chuck went to one recently this past week that deals with forecasting what the economy is going to do. Our budget, just like your own budgets, are driven by what happens in the economy. And as you will see in this presentation, when the Great Recession hit the world, I mean, it was a worldwide recession, it had an impact on us and our biggest source of revenue. Okay?
Good evening.
Good evening, Nicole.
As John mentioned, we're going to be making a series of presentations to you. The first is our second quarter financial report. We also want to brief you on the mid-year budget adjustments that will be coming to you tomorrow night for adoption, and provide you with a five-year forecast, and along with that, the projected budget gap for next year. Many of you have probably seen this chart before, but I think it's worth revisiting that, from a revenue standpoint, our collection rate is not smooth. We have several of our major revenue sources that come in in not smooth patterns, and their payments, for instance, real estate, we get paid quarterly, and so those don't tend to follow a, you know, one-twelfth payment. Personal property is paid once a year on June 5. And our business professional occupational licenses, the license renews on December 31, but the revenue comes in between January and March. The expenditures, however, tend to be fairly consistent from month to month because it's primarily compensation and accounts payable, except if we have capital projects that we're expending, which would be in the CIP fund, the expenditure is, expenditures are fairly Given where we are now at the second quarter, we don't see any obvious deviations from our revenue and expenditure patterns. This chart shows the status of the general fund at 50% of the year complete. Revenues are at 39% of projections, and expenditures are at 47%, and that's consistent with our expectation for this time of the year, particularly on the revenue side. Our top 10 revenues account for about 80% of our total general fund revenues, so by just focusing in on those top 10, we can get an excellent idea of what our overall revenue position looks like. And based on what we're seeing so far, they look as though they are on track with our budget. This chart shows you our top 10 revenue sources, and these are sorted by highest to lowest. And real estate taxes are a major revenue source, and we've received 47% as of December 31, and that's fairly consistent with prior years. Personal property tax is at 22%, but that's primarily because of public service corporation personal property tax and the delinquent property taxes, collections from prior years. The bills won't go out until later this year, and the due date for our main portion of the personal property tax is not until June 5. So we won't, we won't see until later on that revenue stream coming in. The VDOT is just about where it should be, at 50%. PPTRA is the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. The state provides the city with a fixed amount every year, and provides all cities and counties with this amount, to provide personal property tax relief to our residents on their bills. We don't receive this until towards the end of the year, and in fact, one, one of the payments comes in after July 1 and gets accrued back. The state reimburses us monthly for our share, or for their share of the shared cost for the constitutional offices, and they generally lag about a month or so, so they're about where they should be. As you may be aware, the Public Utilities Fund makes an ROI transfer to the general fund, and because we charge that out monthly, they're right at 50%. Telecommunications tax is at 44%. That's primarily a timing difference, a number of our revenue sources, because we accrue the revenue back through August 15. We would not necessarily be at six months of the revenue so far this year. Sales and use tax is projected, I mean, it's coming in just about as projected, may come in a little short of our budget, but we'll continue to monitor that. And as we, as we get closer in to later March, we'll get updated estimates from the state as well for the following year on sales and use tax. The restaurant tax has been doing very well, and again, it's at 42% because of a timing difference, but that's one area where we have seen some growth over the prior year. The B-Pole tax, because we won't get the majority of the revenue until closer to the end of March, it's early, it's kind of early to be able to tell what the trend is with The second quarter real estate tax was due December 31, except for senior citizens, which have a due date of January 5. So their payments would not yet be reflected in those totals. Based on the initial levy plus three-quarters of supplemental levies and projected adjustments and abatements, we're estimating that the real estate tax revenue will come in approximately 1% over budget. However, that amount is just, just under 1% lower than the fiscal year total for last year because, you know, baseline assessments only increased by 0.2%. So we'll, we'll show you some more information on assessed values and what the drivers of the assessed values are. And that will also get to the questions that came up last time about the impact of new development and why aren't we seeing revenue growth from a bottom-line standpoint when we have a number of new developments coming online. Other factors that will influence the total amount of real estate collections will be whatever abatements and other adjustments are made, people will equal, may appeal their assessment to the Board of Equalization, and also the collection rate that the treasurer is able to realize, which varies a little bit from year to year.
Before you leave that slide, Janie, can you speak to that? The 1% over budget, but it'll be just under 1% lower than a 13, 14-year? What's driving that?
I'm not sure I can really speak on that right now. We, where did these figures come from, Carol? What are you basing this on?
I'm basing it on the actual levy so far. Also, keep in mind that the other component of this is the public service corporation, which is included in our real estate tax. Their assessment went down this year, so that's pulling the real estate revenue down from that. And then estimating, which we, you know, we won't know until we get to the end of the year, total adjustments to the levy, and using an average collection rate. Last year, our overall collection rate was a little bit higher than it normally is, but I'm trying to be relatively conservative and assuming that we'll collect 98.5% of it in the first year. So it's based on the assessment data that Janie's provided so far this year, as well as the SEC assessment data for the public service corporations, and an estimate of any adjustments and abatements and the collection rate. And we'll continue...
So when you provide data and do presentations like you're doing now in areas that fall under our assessor, you don't run that by her before you bring that to us? She's asking where you got these numbers from?
This is budget, and...
I understand.
Okay.
But when we put numbers up in her area...
Let me, let me, let me explain. We make estimates. If we're going to make an estimate on our revenue, and this generates the revenue, we're going to make it on the low side. We want to overestimate our expenditure so that if you're surprised at the end of the year, you took in more revenue, and that's great. That's a good position to be in. And if you're surprised that you didn't spend as much, now, we don't, we don't pad the budget, but you would have us on the carpet if we made a real big boner on our revenue estimates. And so our estimates are conservative. They're not going to be out on thin ice.
But, but we also try to be realistic. We're not being overly conservative for the sake of, you know, trying to understate revenues. And there's a difference between the assessed value and what we're projecting in revenue collection. The assessed values come directly from the information that Janie provides, but the additional piece of that is what, what changes may occur to that and what the ultimate collection rate is. Because if, you know, if we, if we collect 98% versus 99%, that makes a, you know, big difference in what our total bottom line is.
And where are we on the collection piece? I see our treasurer here. I don't know if you want to help me, but where are we at with the collection piece? Don't we average annually leaving what, roughly about a million dollars on the table? Or are we leaving that much? Or how are you doing in collections?
I can speak to the measure that the treasurer's, who has Commonwealth, measured on. We have to report, and I just finished doing this report today for the comp board, and we're 99.23 after the ability, having the ability in one year. So we're measured one year from the due dates, and of course, we all understand the quarterly and et cetera, et cetera. So I've just reported that for, our collection rate on real estate was 99.23, and our collection on personal property was 96. And again, that's, that's actual, to actual, this, what you're seeing here, Carol can speak, as she just said, that's budget. And I track my statistics on actual book that Janie gives me and Frankie gives me on personal property. So after one year, we're at 99.23 because they are delinquent collections.
That's pretty good on the, on the, on the real estate. What about the personal property? You say 96%?
I just reported 96% after one year of assessment. Now, I understand that June 5 is the annual date, but the commissioner does make monthly assessments, supplements up through February 28 of the following calendar year, so. But we're at 96% after one year on personal property, 98.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, 99 on real estate. I just happen to know that I just signed off on it.
Sounds good. Yes, sir.
I believe the question that the mayor was asking, which I didn't hear the answer to, was how can we present information to the council that comes from the assessor, and the assessor not be aware of that information and not aware of what these numbers represent?
The answer to that question, I thought I gave, which is, this is budget. We, we're not disputing anything that Janie does with assessment, and you don't assess public service corporations, do you?
No, sir.
And so that gets factored into our assessment. Public service corporations are assessed by the State Corporation Commission and not by, by any local government. And when you think about, look at Verizon, how much property they owned in the city of Portsmouth. That's not assessed by, by Janie, but that's part of our tax base.
Right. But when you, when you say that real estate tax revenue will come in approximately 1% over budget, isn't that real estate tax, isn't that factored by the tax rate?
It's tied to two things. It's tied to the value of the property that's being, this is an ad valorem tax, it's based on the value of what's being taxed. So that's one function. The other variable is the tax rate.
Right. And isn't her side, isn't her side the value of the property?
Hers, but she doesn't value all the property in the city of, I mean, the city of Portsmouth. It's, yeah, I wish we had that side. It's, there's a large amount of property that's public service corporation that she doesn't assess.
Well, and I think it's also worth noting that, that this is very preliminary in the process. As Janie gets closer to finalizing her assessment, we have, you know, discussions about what those assessed values are likely to look like. This is really more of a revenue forecasting model. The, the underlying data is based on actual so far this year. But I went back to this slide so you can see, this is another thing that impacts us. The last quarterly payment for real estate is not due until June 30, and we only accrue through August 15. So, and the, the due date for the seniors would be July 5. So, you know, that's going to impact our final, the collection rate for that final payment because we are on a quarterly basis. So there's a timing difference between when revenue comes in and gets booked versus what the, the ultimate levy and the accounts receivable is. I mentioned earlier, the personal property tax bills are mailed in April, they're due on June 5. We will not therefore see any revenue collection until near the end of the fiscal year, and we'll, we'll have a better idea once those, that the assessment is finalized, where we stand and what the, the growth rate is on that. Our other major taxes include sales and use tax, which right now represents five months of collection, again, because we do an accrual. We expect the revenue to come in very close to the budget amount based on receipts to date. The revenue for the restaurant meals tax is, is net of one payment that we accrued back. We are expecting that to come in a little over budget or 2% more than last year. I mentioned earlier, the B-Pole revenue will be coming in January through March, with most of it coming in in the latter portion of that period.
I meant to keep stopping. You've got the restaurant piece up here, and I keep getting called by the media about the tolls and the impact and whether or not we're experiencing, or whether or not we can talk to and directly correlate the toll, tunnel closures and all of that to our revenues here, or the like thereof. Are we able to get any real close numbers of that? I know we did some, some early on...
Franny, come on.
Studying and talking to folks, but, you know, we're, we're a year in now. It's February, the tolls were in place last February, so I think we got some...
Very good question. Remember, I mentioned to you the last year, right before the General Assembly, Dr. Cook, James Cook, President Emeritus, an economist, did the study, the analysis of the impact of the tolls on Portsmouth. And without question, we had the greatest negative impact, followed by Suffolk. I reported to you at the last meeting that we're having, one year later, Dr. Cook to come back and do another analysis, now that we have a year's worth of experience. And Bill asked some questions about that. We had not had the meeting yet then with Dr. Cook, and you've since met with Dr. Cook. You want to report out anything?
Well, we've just gotten started. We did have an initial meeting. We're, we're getting a contract put together to engage his services. But in addition to looking at the traffic impacts, he's going to go back and, and personally contact select businesses. And one of the benefits of having him do that rather than us do that is, he will probably be better at being able to get some real sales and restaurant revenue data from those businesses than we could if we went and asked. So that's part of the plan for his report back, and...
But I was hoping we could use some of our actual stuff, because a lot of the stuff we got from the restaurants and all were projections, and now that we're collecting, we ought to be basing that on what we're actually collecting, because, as you know, the other piece was, we had to trust what they told us, because you're not going to go and ask them to open their books up and, and show us for definite. But, but the piece in, in Dr. Cook's study last year talked about the discretionary folks that were traveling here, outside of the ones that had to. And I think our number was about 14,000 citizens a day had to go to Norfolk and Virginia Beach on the eastern side of there. But the other number was the folks that normally came over here that he thought would have, and attributed to that factor, that big negative factor that he put in there. And I'm curious as to see if those folks are actually going around, are actually going through and still shopping and eating here. You know, the PDC just put out a study the other day, that survey that they did, and it was tainted, and I think Mark Godogia, I don't know if he's in here, he kind of shot them down because they tried to make it seem like the toll wasn't that great of an impact. And they didn't factor in the fact that the governor cut the number in half. And so if, and it has been a huge impact, and if the number had not been dropped to 75 cents, and it was at $1.54. I mean, you know, so all of that stuff is how you spin it and how you tell it, and that's all great, but I wanted to go off our actual data that we had since we're a year in.
And he is, and so we need to give him a chance. I mean, he produced a very credible study last year.
That's right.
And I expect a very credible study this year.
Okay.
And so we're, we're doing exactly what, we'll have the answers to your questions once the study is completed.
Okay, very good. Bill?
Well, my point to that is that, I'm sure his study will be interesting and revealing, but just as the national retailers compare one year to the next, year over year, they do it on a same-store basis. Now, I would think that we have enough data on, okay, these restaurants were doing business in Portsmouth last February, we're at this February. What is their tax revenue? What is their meal tax? What is their lodging tax?
Bill, we...
We can't, we can't, we don't have to contract somebody to do that, I would hope.
You asked that question, we quoted you at the last meeting. The only person that knows what a business does under the law is the commissioner of revenue. The commissioner of revenue will not share that information with anybody else, will not share it with me, won't share it with you.
But the treasurer collects it, so we can go off of what he's collecting.
We can get it in the aggregate.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
We can get it, we can get it in the aggregate, but we can't get it, you know, we can't take the ABC hot dog stand and get that information year to year. We can get it in the aggregate, and that's what, that's what we're going to do. The only person that can get that information and does get the information is the commissioner of revenue.
Vice Mayor.
But wouldn't it also be important to know, I'm sitting here, as soon as I saw that, I'm thinking, did we open any new restaurants? You know, did we have an influx of restaurants open that would make that tax go up? And I'm not recalling a rash of them.
Or price increases, menu price increases would also make that revenue go up.
So that's a tripping into that.
The other compound... The other compounding negative side of it is, in addition to the tolls, we've got tunnel construction. And the schedule for closures has had an equal impact as the actual toll itself. So we've got to try to extract that out and determine, you know, what the total...
And this is important work. The key is to get these tolls either eliminated or written down. And it's going to take hard data like this, hard analysis, to bring that about. When you think about the amount of new money that's being generated for HR TAC, there, hopefully, the solution may not come this year, may not come next year, but we got 50 more years to work on this thing, 50 more years to work on this thing. So we need to be doing this type of study every year. This study is not for the city, it's for the citizens that live here.
What's the cost of this study?
$18,000.
That's about what we paid him last year.
Exactly what we paid him last year.
Yeah, Dr. Wood.
What is the cutoff date for the data that Dr. Cook will be collecting?
When is he producing the study by?
No, no, not producing the study, but what time period is he collecting that?
It'll be February 1 to February 1.
February 1 of this year?
We haven't closed out 12 months' worth of data yet because the tolls begin...
February 1 of last year to February 1 of this year? Well, that will not take into account the impact of the increased toll. Because based on what you have here, the initial toll, you're seeing a 2% over last year.
Right.
We're hoping that ain't the toll causing that increase.
Well, I mean, what that suggests is...
I know, that's why I raised the whole point.
The toll has not caused the negative.
What we want him to do is look at the actual impact and compare that to his forecast last year and to also forecast in the future, because now we have a new toll rate, and at least do one more year in the future with the new toll rate.
I was just curious, if this is what you're projecting from your data, isn't this suggesting that the toll has not had the negative impact that we thought?
That's a very good point. It depends on who you talk to. Now, we...
I'm talking to you.
You didn't hear what I said. What I said, it depends on who you talk to as a restaurant owner, okay? Now, you talk to one in this block and they'll say that I've lost business year to year. You talk one block over and that restaurant owner says, it's not impacting me because my clientele is from Portsmouth, Western Branch, and Northern Suffolk, and that's where my marketing is done. So it depends on who you talk to as to whether or not they're on the plus side or on the negative side as far as restaurant revenue is concerned.
Right. Well, you're talking about at an individual level of analysis. I'm talking about the overall analysis. What you're showing is the impact on revenue from restaurants to the city is coming in at 2% greater than last year even with a toll.
That's good news.
Now, that might mean that some went out of business, some started business, but the overall impact of that is showing that it has not had the effect that we...
Well, I would not...
Well, the reason I'm asking is because if we're measuring it on the new toll, but now we have increased tolls, then we're spending $18,000 on a study that may not be giving us relevant information versus looking at what will the impact be now that the tolls have increased.
You didn't hear what Brandon said. Brandon said it's going to look back, but it's also going to look prospectively, just like he did last year. He looked prospectively. This guy's quite good. And we were able to use that with the General Assembly. This is, again, a study that is going to be relevant because that toll increase didn't come on board until January 15th. So we got nearly a whole year's worth of data at one toll rate. And so let's, what I recommend that we do is, let's see what the analysis shows, and let's see what the predictions look like. This 2%, I'm just as pleased as I can be about that. But again, it could be that prices went up, it could be that restaurants opened. You walk by every day and get surprised that there's a Chinese restaurant on High Street that closed, it's right across from the children's museum.
There was another factor in there last year, too. There were quite a few snow days. We had some big storms last year, and overall, that can make a difference. My point, I know we're going to contract for Dr. Cook to do this study, but looking at the greater picture on a regional level, why don't we try to contact some of our sister cities that more than likely would have impact and see if they would want to do a regional study as well? I mean, I think that's where our clout is. I don't think Portsmouth carrying the results of a study up to Richmond in the General Assembly, we've gone it alone trying to prevent the tolls. We carried it as high in the state as we could. We weren't successful. So why don't we try to encourage our regional sister cities to go do a regional study? They might have more clout up in Richmond.
We've got a chief economist with the PDC, and as you know, I'm the chair of the PDC. And Greg's, that's one of the things, he's starting to collect too data for the whole region so we can get some of that as he comes online with some of the actual stuff he's getting there. But, I mean, I think you see, I think most of us thought it was a little disingenuous. Chesapeake came out publicly and said they're opposed to tolls now because there's a potential it may be going on a high rise, but we couldn't have a word from them when we were out fighting a good fight last year. And so, again, it's interesting how the region is settling in on this, and everybody's trying to look past this deal and trying to see if we can't make sure we do the other deals correctly. And Mayor Framan and myself brought up at the HR TAC that we think there's still an opportunity, even though the governor has said he thinks he's done all he can do. We think with this $200 million coming in through the HR TAC money annually, that there may be some opportunities for us to get some of that money to buy the toll down. And so we just threw it out. As a matter of fact, he introduced it last month at the meeting, and we jointly presented it, you know, just for the rest of the board to think about it. And so it's shifting. My only concern here is, I saw that number, and everybody's telling their different stories about the impacts and all, and I just think some of these things here, until we know enough, we ought to keep it at a committee level before we bring it in here and put it out in front of everybody with a whole lot of guesstimation.
Well...
That's my concern. Are these the numbers that you want to be presenting to Richmond?
Hey, man, these numbers are what they are. I mean, you can't, this is what we're predicting, that by the end of the year, it's going to be 2% greater. That's what you pay me to do. You pay me to make a prediction on what the revenues and what the expenditures are going to be. And we're giving you a forecast as good as we can.
I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning, is this the picture you wanted to take to our legislators?
I want to take the truth to Richmond.
Well, I'm not asking you not to give the truth. I'm just saying, is, does this reflect the fact that we've had a recent toll increase? And will that impact on these numbers? And should you wait to take those type of figures to Richmond to measure a better impact to see if, as a result of this increase, do we still come out with 2% or increase in where we were the previous year? That's, I'm not saying to falsify anything, but I'm just, I don't think this is going to support your argument.
This is only one impact on the economy. Remember, we've got people who have to pay a toll daily to get to work, and there's an economic consequence to that that's not reflected in this number. It's really interesting that we've kind of made this the lightning rod for tolls. But tolls have an impact on the commuter going outbound list, is what the mayor said, but also the person coming in, whether they're coming in to visit family or go to the children's museum or to go to a restaurant. And so what we're trying to do is get the total feel of the impact of the tolls with the study, just not on the meals tax.
I agree with that. I'm just, the reason is, the lightning rod is because that's who I saw on television who was complaining was that our businesses would be impacted. I didn't see average commuters just talking. It was connected to the revenue in the city from business and restaurants.
And you see, the thing I'm interested in is, I mean, we've invested a lot in our children's museum. The traffic coming in has increased over the last four or five years since we made, I think it was about a $14 million investment. And then it dropped off last year. There was a piece where they went over and talked to Nancy about some of the things that she thought and what other people thought attributed to the drop, the tunnel closures and all that. But those folks come and had a huge impact on our restaurants because those folks knew it. Once we got done with that construction and the more people came over, they spent the day downtown in the restaurants. And that's just the stuff you hear on the street as I walk through talking to folks. And how much of that was offset, even though the net gain could be a 2% increase? I mean, based on what? We were hurting the last three or four years with the restaurant, with all of that business. And what is the actual delta? What should we have realized? Should we have realized 10% and we're only getting 2%? I mean, you know, everybody spends that number the way they want, and they're doing it on a regional level. And that's why I'm interested in what Dr. Cook's going to do. But I'm like you, Bill, I want to see the actual collections that we've got over the last year to know for ourselves what we got actually coming through the door.
Yeah, and I think what, that's what, John, is it's two different pieces here, is what the, how our toll was impacting these numbers, but the numbers are the numbers. And I think that's what you're trying to share with us, that this is where we stand at almost the halfway point. It wasn't too long ago, and I think, Elizabeth, you may remember it, when the numbers were overly optimistic given to us, which created problems as we got closer to the end of the year. So I think a toll study and the impact of that is two different things. And me hearing a restaurateur on the local news, to me, that's probably a little bit anecdotal, and they probably overemphasizing the fact. And we got to deal with the real numbers, and hopefully, Dr. Cook can separate the anecdotal stuff to the real facts. My guess is, some of the people that used to drive over to Norfolk and Virginia Beach now instead of paying a toll are probably, I would like to think, are eating in Portsmouth. So I don't think it's a one-way street there.
All right, good point. Let's move on.
And one thing I'd add to...
Find us another lightning rod.
This is probably $1,000, too.
There are a lot of things that affect people's disposable income, the spend in restaurants. And as gas prices have gone down, people's total commuting costs, even with the toll, may be less than it was six months ago, which may make them more likely to, you know, to spend in Portsmouth's restaurants.
Before you leave this, this, again, always is a target during the General Assembly, the B-Pole tax.
Every year?
Every year. And so we're on guard for that. And as you'll see later, that's a significant source of revenue for us.
Okay.
We have state revenue that's also in our top 10. And I think we touched on this, the VDOT revenues are on target. Personal Property Tax Relief Act, we will not get any revenue from the state until after the end of the year, and we'll accrue that back. And the shared cost that we get reimbursed for monthly by the state compensation board.
The relief act, that consistent?
It's a fixed amount. It's the same amount every year. It's just under $9.9 million. And so every year, the, when the personal property tax bills are being finalized, the commissioner has to estimate what percent to apply to those bills to end up with exactly $9.9 million so that we're not overcrediting or undercrediting. And it's kind of a, you know, it's a difficult estimate to make, and I know the treasurer keeps track of that from year to year.
Y'all do it together. Didn't you work with the commissioner to do that? Or he just does that?
We do it together. We're not always...
Who's the final decision maker?
You want to answer that question? Who makes the final decision?
Yeah, I think it's...
We try to...
I should remember some turmoil with that number last year.
Yeah. The thing is, again, you don't want to leave money on the table. If you're too aggressive in making the percentage, then we got to put our own money up.
Right.
And you don't want to, you want it to be right on the penny.
And there have been years where we've repaid it back more than, quite a bit more than that $9.9 million.
Yeah.
But it, you know, it also is impacted by what ultimate collection rates are as well.
And Jimmy, I must say, he is really aggressive. He's a real pro at getting people to pay on time. And most people do pay on time. And so it's not fair for the people who pay on time and may have to take out, do something extraordinary to pay on time. And so he does a real good job at that.
$9.7%, I'd say.
That's pretty good.
So now turning to our expenditures. This chart shows the general fund expenditures through the end of December, and this does not include encumbrances. So this is just actual, you know, checks out the door. We are at 47% overall, 49% on the expenditures before other financing uses, which is the transfers the general fund makes to other funds. One thing that is skewing that bottom line, as you can probably see, is debt service. We obviously have to pay our debt service payments on the dates that they're due, and that doesn't occur evenly throughout the year. So that can impact the bottom line. But based on what we're seeing so far, we don't see anything overall that's a concern from the expenditure standpoint.
So we're, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
If we take that 74% out of that debt service, then we...
Dr. Wood.
Yeah. And that's at the 50% level, so we're averaging about 4% to 5% below where we're on the expense side. And if we mimic that next year...
But there are some...
The next half of the year.
And there are some, you know, larger contracts like for paving and other major infrastructure that don't occur evenly throughout the year. And again, we haven't counted all of the purchase orders that people have issued that they haven't paid for yet, because some of those are open POs that don't necessarily...
Have been invoched out and all that.
Right.
Okay. Dr. Wood.
Ms. Wendell, can you explain when it says non-departmental?
Sure.
What is that?
Yes, that includes a number of expenditures, including our payment to Hampton Roads Transit, the regional jail. It's where our tax relief for the elderly and disabled is budgeted. And all the civic organizations are paid out of there as well.
We'll send you a list of that. How about if we do that?
Yeah, very good.
But that gives you a flair for what's...
I'm curious, as far as expenditures such as with, do we have expenditures with Portsmouth Partnership, the Economic Development Authority, the Ports and Industrial Commission? Are there expenses that are associated with those?
The EDA has its own budget, and it has its own funds. The Economic Development Department is part of the general government. The Economic Development Department, Chuck, would you stand? Staffs not only the EDA, which again, has its own budget and its own source of funds, but also staffs the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, which meets tomorrow morning at 8:00.
So there are no city funds expenditures going to these groups? Portsmouth Ports and Industrial and EDA and Portsmouth Partnership?
Their funds go into the Portsmouth Partnership because we're a member of the Portsmouth Partnership. I'll be glad to get that information.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious where that was and...
That would be non-departmental.
That's non-departmental.
Yes, sir. All right, Chuck.
We're going to get that list of civic organizations again this year? The list of civic organizations?
Yes, sir.
Do we get that?
Yeah.
And if you still, if you have your budget at the end, there's supplemental, the appendix section has a line item budget in it that shows line by line in the non-departmental category, everything that is budgeted for, including all the civic organizations.
I got one question. Has anything changed with that? If nothing's changing with it?
Yes, sir.
Does it stand the same?
Right.
Okay. That's my question. If y'all want to try to pull a faster number.
Well, that's what you're proposing, right?
That's what I'm proposing, yeah. But we got a ways to go, folks, before that proposal gets on the table, as you'll see.
But that's what we're doing here, talking about it, right?
We're talking about it. Right. But right now, what we're doing is talking about the quarterly financial report. We hadn't gotten into the budget or the forecast yet.
Looking at some of our other major funds, the Public Utilities Fund is at 43% of budget for revenues and expenditures. And again, their debt services, like the general fund... fund, it's paid when those payments are due. The Waste Management Fund is at 37% on the revenue side, 35% on operations. Stormwater is at 50% of revenue, 38% of operating program. The Golf Fund is at 49% of budget for revenue and 49% of budget for operations, again, not including debt service, which the majority of those payments are yet to come. Parking Authority Fund is at 45% of revenue and 36% of expenditures for its operations. So that concludes the first quarter, or excuse me, second quarter financial report, unless there are any other questions.
Yeah, two. First of all, back on the waste management side, where are we with our financial model that we set out to the public about recycling? We had X amount of dollars from the capital side that we invested in three trucks, and I think we bought another one online, buying the containers. We had a 20% participation rate. We break even in five years. We're averaging 50%. Where are we looking at those numbers? We don't need to do that now. I would like a breakdown-
Sure.
-of where we are. We just finished our one year, and everything looks great. I'd like to know where we are with that, just so we can be talking in specific numbers. The second one, yeah, you don't need to answer that, Dennis, now. I won't put you on the spot. I know you're prepared, though. But the Golf Fund, can you go back to that, the debt service piece? What are we paying annually? Is it six?
It varies.
It's about $674,000 is our total principal and interest.
But it's not fixed. It will go up and down each year.
Because this year, we're looking at eating about $1.4 million?
It's the transfer from the general fund's $1,318,452.
Remember, we were, same time last year compared to this year, we're about $40,000 more in revenue and about $20,000 less in expenditures. Remember, we have a new model. In fact, you want to pass this out?
Sure.
Quite a bit of work has been done by Nida.
This is only a small, small piece of it.
And my reason for asking here is I want to make sure, as we move forward and look and analyze this whole golf piece, that we're looking at what we're actually doing on an operational basis and separating out the debt service.
Exactly.
Because if we want to look going forward at a different model, we want to make sure we're comparing apples and apples and that. Because that debt service includes what we did there, what we did over at the Links and somewhere else, and it's all bundled in there.
Right. The Pavilion, as you know, does more than just golf. And as Nida will tell you, we're going to a new model this month or next month on the Pavilion?
Well, yes, in March. Now, and just to give you a little bit of background information, you recall July-
And thanks, by the way. I hate to keep interjecting, but this is good.
No, no, no.
This is a good time to bring it up, so.
July 1 of last year, this fiscal year, the city took back quite a few of the items that have been contracted away in terms of revenue. So for example, the pro got all of the proceeds, the profit from the pro shop, from the store that's in the golf shop. The pro ended up, prior to July 1, got all of the revenue for all of his lessons, although he was on a salary for the city. In addition to that, the city contracted away all of its revenue for the Pavilion. And we have not gotten any revenue for any rental of the Pavilion, I think in the past 17 years. So starting March, we anticipate getting that revenue back coming into the city as well. So there were several revenue streams that were just contracted out that the city never got the benefit of.
Did you hear what she said?
Oh, no.
If you had a family reunion and went to the Pavilion, the only thing that you paid, and you paid it to the contractor, you didn't pay it to the city, not a penny of that went to write down the debt service.
Right.
And so, starting in March, we'll have a rental rate. You want it for four hours? Here's the rate. You want an easel stand? Here's the rate. You want tables? Here's the rate.
So there was a sole source provider for the Pavilion who received all revenue for food and for the Pavilion rental. So we're getting that revenue back.
And that's good. That's, again, that's the crux of my question. I want to get to these actual numbers, what we're putting in place, and how well it's going. Because, I mean, you seen on the news, Norfolk just got a private person to go and run their courses, the same guy that's doing Virginia Beach. I mean, I'm not saying we need to jump into that, but I want to make sure if we go down that road financially, we're comparing the apples to apples and making sure that we just don't make a unilateral, let's just give it to somebody, or let's just keep it. But like you said there, we want the numbers to be the numbers and separate that whole debt service piece. Yeah, Dr. Woodruff?
Yeah, well, I have a serious issue in a city that has a number of kids on free and reduced lunch and struggling with our school system. And I'm looking here that we're subsidizing an activity that those who are typically involved in it can more than subsidize it themselves. And we're putting $1.3 million into this, and I don't see how we can justify that in a city that is as financially strapped and a school system that hasn't been properly funded. How can we justify putting $1.3 million from taxpayers' dollars into a recreational activity that only benefits a very privileged few?
I appreciate your question, and it's a good question. But Chuck, will you stand up, please? Chuck will tell you that in the arsenal of stuff that, what makes a community great, having a municipal golf course is what helps make-
Well, it's one thing having a municipal golf course, it's another one having one that is standing on its own.
And we're trying-
Here, this is being subsidized significantly by taxpayers' dollars in a city that is financially strapped. And so I don't see how we have not seriously looked into privatizing this and getting this off of the books.
Give me a chance to explain, okay? We have made dramatic changes at that golf course. We have taken what was being revenue going out the door from the pro shop, it's now come to the city. Revenue that was going to a salaried employee is now coming to the city. If you look at it as a multi-step process, my recommendation is that we try these new business models first before we jump to a conclusion that may not be valid.
My question, based on what you have up there, is that a break even, is that a break even analysis?
No.
No.
Dr. Woodruff, if I may answer your question, there are two golf courses that we have. One is City Park, and the other one is Bydaway. And this Golf Fund represents both. City Park, and I'll ask Wanda to speak to this, has a large number of programs for our youth, and that has a loss every year as well. We have put together a plan, which we're going to share in February, where Bydaway can actually break even and cover all of its costs. The issue is, is with City Park covering its costs, but we have a lot of children's programs at City Park, and that's where we plan on having more programs.
So is Bydaway breaking even without City assistance?
It will break even. If you take a look at this, and let me just share with you, and again, in February, we want to come back and give you the thorough analysis. But on this sheet here-
Well, what I'm saying, you're saying it will break even.
Right.
Hasn't been-
It hasn't broken.
We've only had it for six months. And so we've had to restructure the pricing on it.
Give us a chance.
So how was it functioning prior to six months?
Prior to that, it was not really under the control of the city per se, or Parks and Recs. It was under the control of the pro, and basically-
But were we subsidizing it with City?
For 17 years.
That's what I'm saying.
We get your point, and we don't disagree with you. Give us a chance to try to turn this around.
Mr. Wendell?
Well, personally, I don't think it, I don't see how you can justify putting that amount into a golf fund in a city that is financially strapped as we are and having a high number of children on free and reduced lunch.
But Dr. Woodruff, because of previous councils and commitments to spend money to do that, we're stuck with this debt service. And how we get our way out of it is part of this whole new model that they're trying to present. I want to give this new model a chance, but I also want to make sure we compare it with outside sources to making sure that we're not just slowly bleeding.
Is the new model trying to sustain it or trying to get it out from under the city's subsidization?
Right. Well, she just said she's going to bring to us next month showing that Bydaway's going to break even, and then we'll look at the Links piece and what costs is there outside of the debt service. That's just the 900-pound gorilla that we got to eat until it goes away, right?
That's right. Because that debt service increase is up to $804,000, and it's going to last for another 11 years.
I mean, there's been previous criticisms that we've spent way too much money doing a whole lot of things that we didn't need because we couldn't afford it. But that's done now, so we-
But there are a couple of successes, though, I'd like to share.
Yeah, not yet. We ain't on the successes.
To that point, I'm not too far from my colleague's position, and I've mentioned that before. I appreciate the fact that we are going to have a new model, but I would wager a large bet that I don't think that new model is going to get it into the black where we're not putting 1.3, almost 1.4 million dollars in it. I think, I'm not saying we need to jump at the first thing that comes along, but I think we need to compare any proposal to operate these courses. We need to take a very serious look at it, and it needs to be shared with council on what the numbers are. Because I know the debt service is for the rebuilding, we actually rebuilt two golf courses.
You won't get-
And they've been responsible, or at least Bydaway's been responsible for, I think, a large part of Newport, probably even-
Victory.
The college.
Yeah.
So, but we got to deal with the present. And putting 1.3 million in it every year has got to end.
I think it's going to get worse.
I think that's what you said.
So if a proposal comes in, I'd like for it to be shared with council.
Now, that was the, I'll get you, Doc. That was the crux, the reason I asked to go back to that slide, because I want to make sure what's being presented to us, that we can see in layman's terms. So if we do get an outside proposal and we look at that, we're not got it co-mingled with a whole lot of other things.
That's a good point.
So we're making the right decision. So thank you for that. Dr. Edmonds?
Now, the way it was, we all agreed that it was wrong. And so what they're presenting is pointing to our disagreement.
I'm sorry.
Trying to bring away and how to fix it. And I like the direction that they're going to fix it. I don't think it's going to take away from anything. It's going to be better than what it was. And so we've given them that opportunity to do that, and they're presenting something to us that leads us in that direction.
Yes, sir.
And you can say what I said. You know, when I came here, council, the golf course was my, was one of the things I wanted to get fixed, because I agree with you saying about the money. And part of the problem was the way it was operating. Former Vice Mayor Charlie Weiss and I went out there two days, just to watch operation. People coming to pay for a tournament, money went to the pro. They went to the golf store to buy something. I bought, one of them bought you a round of golf, bought you your certificate. City got none of that money. Drove me freaking nuts. Four years we pounded on that. And finally, finally, we've changed some of that.
Changed all of it.
The amounts of money that was going out the door with the way I was operating, if we had been, if we had changed this model six years ago, we would probably be making money on a golf course right now. But we could not get a council, well, at least for four years, could not get four people on the council to push that envelope and make that happen. So we're out here, Dr. Woodruff, right now? The people who sit around this table?
Fix that.
It's our fault. And I say our, even though I was on losing the fight, I was one of the seven, one of the two, three fighting it. It's our fault. We could have had this fixed, and we should have had this fixed a long time ago, because none of us would have run our personal business or our personal finances the way we sat there and let that golf course be operated. None of us would have done that. We'd all be, we'd all be living on the streets right now. And so we are to blame, and we got to fix them. We can't let it continue.
And that's why I appreciate his point. I mean, this wasn't the only thing. I think the Sports Hall of Fame, we had the same issue, and we finally got our arms around that piece. And we need to do the same thing here and then with some of the other things.
Well, my question then is, is it a consensus of council now that the model that's going to be presented is going to get the city out from subsidizing the golf course? I mean, what is the direction that we're giving?
I want to see what they just put in place and what we think we're going to realize, and give it time to see if we realize it. And on a parallel track, be looking at outside privatizations. At some point, we'll make a decision, I would think, within the next year.
So we haven't given them any direction?
No, they just got on, they just got on board. She's getting ready to present to us what she's doing, and I want to-
Yeah, they just made these changes.
Right. It's a self-evident mission, okay? And that's self-evident is that my goal is to make that self-sustaining. That's my goal. That's her goal. That's her goal. So, I mean, you can tell me to do that, but I'm going to do it anyway. That's the model that we're going to bring back in February. That's what we've been working hard on for the last year. And we've, you know, I think that we've made a 180-degree turn.
But you knew it just came on in the cold weather, right?
This year.
Right, right. But, you know, and when you look at it, again, this is only a small bit of information that's going to be shared with you in February. But right now, we are working with TCC to start classes. We had Dr. Woodhouse contact us. We're meeting her next week to have credit hour courses offered at TCC for golf. So we're actively working in the community. We expect, we're increasing our rates. We're changing the rates. And from the peak season till the end of this fiscal year, that's going to give us almost just a little bit under $100,000 in revenue. So the people that use the facility are going to pay for using the facility. We weren't getting the revenue that we needed to get.
Well, the biggest obstacle you face, you can't do anything about, and that's the golf industry itself. This area, this region is overbuilt, and the number of golfers playing golf is decreasing.
But if you take a look at that graph on this chart-
Yeah, that's what I say. That's region-wide, that's nationwide.
But look at the graph. This graph tells you the number of rounds of play per month for Bydaway. And it compares it to the state average, the national average, and North Carolina average. And Bydaway exceeds every average a round in terms of rounds of play. So we have a diamond in the rough. And with that exceeding the rounds of play-
And we got a good price.
We got a good price.
That's why they come out.
That extra is your price elasticity.
Dr. Woodruff, I thought that went for $3 million.
We have some elasticity in that price that we can use for our advantage. So there are a lot of good things that we're going to be sharing with you, and there are some hard things we're going to have to do. There are some cost reductions we're going to have to take next year. And I have those listed. It looks like about $285,000 to $300,000 in cost downs we're going to be doing. So-
Well, we'll look forward to your February piece, because, again, and I'm glad we're asking these questions, because this is what we shouldn't be doing with all of the things we do, so we're not-
That's the last question, because you give us, you've given us this graph showing what's happened on a national average.
Right.
I'd be more curious in seeing how these type of golf courses are doing in cities that have similar demographics and economics as ours.
Sure.
Because the national average takes into account communities that do not reflect-
We'll do that.
And we have Virginia as well here in the state.
Well, you have Virginia. You have cities in Virginia.
Okay. We'll do that. And we'll see what we can do.
Good point. Okay, very good. Thanks. All right. Yeah, I think they were my two questions. We can get on to the mid-year now. We'll get there.
So tomorrow night, there's an ordinance coming to make certain mid-year adjustments. The most significant one, which is revenue neutral and is consistent with what we did last year, is we started last year to account for all of the debt service that's not enterprise fund-related in a separate debt service fund, so we can better track that. And particularly with the pension obligation bonds, we want to make sure that all of the funds that contribute to that are doing so in a way that we can account for it more easily. Beginning in fiscal year 15, 16, with the next budget, we will present a proposed budget that has the debt service fund budgeted for that way. But for now, we need to appropriate the $37.9 million in that fund. The second one is a transfer from the OPEB fund to the remaining, there's, over a period of years, I think it was 2009, 2011, the city transferred $5.5 million from the health insurance fund to the OPEB fund, and it wasn't used for anything. There really wasn't any plan as to how to address OPEB, and it was one-time money. And really, that brought the fund balance for the health insurance fund down below where it really should have been. So last year, we transferred $2.5 million over to cover some shock loss claims. We want to transfer the remaining $3 million, which will provide a cushion in the fund balance, not only for city healthcare costs, but also to allow us to backstop the schools, because they have just started their self-insured program for health- because they have just started their self-insured program for health insurance, and so, we're asking to make that transfer.
So, covered the $2 million we guaranteed the schools?
It was 2.7 roughly, but we also have, you know, we have claims costs of our own that may not always conform with what the original projection was. I mean, they're difficult to predict, and we've asked our healthcare consultant to provide us with updated estimates for this year and next as to what those costs will be, but we really should have adequate fund balance to cover this.
The money there, if something happens, then we cover it.
Yes, sir.
How soon will we be able to start realizing the actual, if we're carrying the savings on the school side? I know we estimated about a half a million dollars on the savings side with the self-insured. I know we had a ramp-up period, and we, you know, so we just used the projection, but how soon will we get a?
It's going to take at least a year. I mean, the health insurance runs on a calendar-year basis, and so, they just implemented this, and so, they're into their 25th day of it. So, it's going to have to go 365 days before they can get a feel for how does this year compare to when they were buying it through a commercial insurance company.
Okay. Dr. Wood?
Yes, can you elaborate on the health insurance fund? There was a memo that we were sent, I believe, last week regarding some savings in this area pertaining to liabilities. That was something like $14 million or something.
Yes, sir. That's the OPEB liability. Remember, we had a big discussion about that, and Paige asked me to send you the background information that we had shared with council, and this was a work in progress over two years. Our bond rating agencies, the people who credit rate us, said you've got some issues. You've got to find a way to fund your pension plan. We have three pension plans. We have the Portsmouth Supplemental Plan, which is closed. We have the Portsmouth Police and Fire, which is closed. And at that time, we were funding those plans 28 cents on the dollar. A pension plan is about assets and liability. The liability is the pensions that you pay out now and will pay out as long as the retiree lives. So, if you've got a dollar's worth of liability, you need a dollar's worth of asset. We had a dollar's worth of liability, but we had 28 cents worth of assets in one plan and 32 cents in the other. And what was that, 32 cents and 28 cents? It was invested in the stock market. So, any bad run in the stock market could have put the plans into bankruptcy, default. So, we did that. Council authorized that we go with pension obligation bonds. We went to the bond market back in May, June of 2013, and we put 167 million.
Yeah, almost 170.
Yeah, almost 170 into those two plans. The second thing that they said was that you've got this unfunded OPEB liability, and prior to January 1, that liability was more than $200 million. And because of the action that we have taken to put our health insurance in a separate container for active employees, a separate container for pre-65, and a separate container for post-65, and moving the post-65 employees out of our group plan, we were able to bring that liability from, and I sent you that chart, from over $200 million to below $50 million. The projection was around $40 million. And what that paper explained was how the post-65 retiree will then have insurance. When you're 65 years of age, you're eligible for Medicare Part A, Medicare Part B. Now, Part A is free, but Part P has a premium, and typically, that premium is deducted from one's social security check, and it starts about $104 a month, and it goes up depending on one's social security or income. And then, there's supplemental insurance. Visualize a fork in the road where.
Let me just sort it, because I think I was.
You got that?
I've answered that part.
Okay.
My question then is, what impact is that going to have on us budget-wise?
It's going to have a positive impact, because what we've done is move the cost of the health insurance, what we were paying for the post-65 employee, out of our group plan.
Okay, so how much savings should we realize as a result of this?
We will not save 100% because what we did, we created a, I'll call it, a health savings account, in which we're putting $1,400 into the account for the retiree. But that is money that that retiree doesn't get because, directly, because that would be a taxable event.
Okay, that's a little too far where I'm trying to go. You presented to us that we were projecting, I think it was a $10 million deficit.
The figure.
One of my previous, it was a $10 million deficit, and I'm curious, how would this impact on that?
Okay. It's not a $10 million deficit because we're self-insured on our.
No, you presented to us at a previous meeting that the overall budget is.
Oh, the gap, the gap that we're projecting.
Oh, it's going to have some impact on that.
That's what I'm asking, how much of an impact do you, you know?
Not a lot, because the unknowns are bigger than any savings that we're going to realize in health insurance. The big savings is going to be on our balance sheet, the liability that we show, from over $200 million to $40 million.
So, it's not going to impact the?
It's not cashing.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
It's not liquid.
Yeah, right, so it's not up there.
All right. Go ahead, Carl.
Looks nice for the rating agencies. It's not in that.
It's good on paper.
Right.
We will have a savings, though, but not, it's not how you can balance the budget. The savings is going to be whatever we were paying for that retiree, this post-65, for our share of the group plan.
Versus the $1,400 per retiree.
Exactly.
And a favorable view from the credit rating agencies when they look, and you no longer have this $200 million bogey sitting there when you're getting ready to go out on the bond market to borrow more money, so.
But the second piece of that is that we have not been fully funding our ARC, our annual required contribution for OPEB, and that's the second piece of the commitment we made to the rating agencies, is that we would move from just simply funding on a pay-as-you-go basis to funding today's portion of that cost over the life of, you know, of each retiree. And that's, on the list of items that we provided at the last meeting, we have fully funding the OPEB ARC and a question mark. We will be getting updated estimates on our health claim costs, but we also are going to be asking our actuary to give us updated estimates for both the ARC and the liability, given where we are, because those estimates that he had provided were based on January 1, 2012 data, and so.
Well, the ARC should change as well with this number going down.
Exactly.
How much in the past have we been averaging on the slack side of the ARC?
Let us get that information to you, because all we've been paying is just our cost of the insurance premium that we calculate, so it's significantly less.
Okay.
But that is one of the benefits of the changes that we've made, is the ARC will come down. The third item on the budget adjustments is moving state technology trust funds for the clerk of the circuit court. She receives these monies from the state, and they are restricted as to use, so we are moving those into the grant fund. And finally, there's a small amount of museum funds that had been previously in the donations fund, and were in lines that were labeled as restricted, that we want to move to the CIP to fund a portion of some of the capital costs that are upcoming for museum facilities. So, unless there are any other questions on those. Moving now to the five-year forecast. This, I think, is the first time that this has been done in recent history, and just to give you some background, the purpose of this is not to, and we're not going to be able to predict with, you know, extensive accuracy. Typically, I mean, it's difficult, you have to remember that when we're predicting the 15, 16 budget, we're forecasting one year out, going five years beyond that, what we're trying to do is give you a sense of, given certain assumptions and given certain trends, what does that gap look like between revenues and expenditures, so that as we're planning the budget for the current fiscal, for next fiscal year, you have a sense of how decisions that are made this year might impact future trends.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm okay with a biannual, but I don't think, have a whole lot of faith in five years or anything we're about to talk about, but anyway, that's just me.
Well, no, I was going to ask, I mean, there's so much uncertainty there, and time is of essence, and I really don't want to spend a lot of time going over something that you have so many variables. If we could look this over, and if we have any questions, come back to the next meeting with it. To spend this much time on this, I think it's not efficient.
Or even if it was a smaller window, I mean, farther you get out.
I mean, you got a council that may not even be here.
Speak for yourself. But, yeah, let's do that. Let us look at that, and then that way.
These are good comments, and I appreciate what you're saying. But, you know, we're a half a billion-dollar corporation, and when we sit down with the people who finance bonds, they want to make sure that we know that we're just not looking to the next day, that we're looking five years out. And not five years out is not prudent. There's one thing, though, I think that's, well, you look at this and you ask, I mean, if you have questions, this is important stuff, and I appreciate where you are and your tolerance for meeting a little bit longer, but these are the questions that are going to be asked of us each time we go to our credit.
We get it, John. We get it. We'll get back with you on that. Thank you for that. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have a need for a closed session.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you want to take us in? Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2 - 3711 for the following purpose: consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff pertaining to probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing would adversely affect the city's negotiating or litigating posture as permitted under subsection 8.7.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Makes his accent. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semis?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in close.